This conference will now be recorded.
So we'll call to order the select board at 6:01 PM on September 19th. We have all three members of the board present here in town hall. And the first aid of business is welcome Peter Merkett, Renewable Energy Working Group. So thank you for joining us, Peter.
Hi.
So we have. We have the lease warrant article approved. And all ready to go. It was approved as you had it drafted.
Yeah.
There was some discussion, I think some emails. I know I emailed you about what town meeting it will be on.
Yes.
We're still waiting on the school planning board for a formal recommendation, but I believe they're planning on doing it at their next meeting, which is in just next week sometime. It's September 20 something, I believe.
Okay.
So. Once we know that, the board has to make a decision about if we want to add anything to that warrant because we're required to call a special town meeting within 30 days of receiving that. But we also have to get 14 days notice. So there's a pretty narrow window.
Two weeks essentially.
Yeah.
We have to, we have two weeks to make a call when we're going to do it.
But not even because if we want to do it earlier in the 30 days.
Up to two weeks.
Yeah. So my, my thought on it was we're in a little bit of a catch 22. Nothing horrible, but if we add things to the town meeting warrant with the school merger, people are going to really want to discuss the school merger and not the other things on the, on the warrant or it might take away from that discussion, which should really be a robust discussion. But if we call a second special town meeting, it's not going to be well received to have multiple special town meetings two years in a row. So thankfully. I mean, it's not a horrible situation to be in, but that's kind of where we're at, Peter.
Peter, can you remind us why, why do we need to do it at an STM and not at next year's ATM?
I didn't quite catch all of that. Why what?
What is the time pressure to get that lease ability approved at a special town meeting rather than waiting till May?
Well, I think that we can. Make more progress with soliciting. On proposals for the landfill site, if we have that lease authorization in place, the sooner it's in place. It's a totally necessary first step. And so, you know, that would, that would delay things by six months.
All right. Well, if it's, if it's pressing, I mean, I have every intention of getting it done this fall. We're just going to have to take a holistic view. I mean, if it was just that, I would have no problem tacking it on to the, to the school warrant because I really don't think it's going to be controversial. But if we have three or four items, we might decide to call a second special town meeting.
Yeah, I have understood that that was a strong possibility. I have, I have no objection to that. I think that's a good way to handle it.
Yeah. Do you have any updates? Someone asked me recently about the, just how everything is going with the consulting, both at the cap landfill and at the fire station?
Well, our energy has for the last couple of months been focused on the landfill project. We've been consulting with Beacon regarding that under the terms of the Metta grant. And during that period, we, you know, we have not focused on the rooftop solar that comes under the ARPA grant. Now I think that we have drafted a solar bylaw revision that we think is appropriate and relates to directly to the closed landfill. I think we can shift our focus and go back to talking about, thinking about planning for rooftop solar on the firehouse and pavilion.
Thank you. So.
We proposed a first stage of solar bylaw revision to the planning board. They were receptive to that. And we're hopeful that the bylaw language that we submitted to the planning board will meet with their approval without significant change and that that too might be ready to be presented for a vote at town meeting later in the fall along with the lease, lease authorization. Article.
So in some way, actually, it might make more sense to plan to do it at a later town meeting. That way the planning board has the time to meet all their requirements.
Yes.
And you could do one, not one stop shopping, but both things on the same warrant.
I think so. I, you know, my, my gut sense is that both will be not particularly controversial. The zoning is, you know, more complicated. It's not just a simple matter of authorizing the select board to lease the landfill parcel for a solar array. But we have that pretty well in hand. I think we can explain it to voters at town meeting without difficulty. And I also plan to write about that for the Monterey News in the October issue.
Great.
Have you also worked out? Forgive me if you've already explained this, but have you also worked out what ownership will look like of the solar array at the cap landfill? I mean, are we kind of assuming that another third party will own it and that's why we're doing a lease?
Yes, a third party will be the developer. The distribution of the, you know, benefits from the asset, that is to say, the renewable energy credits and the actual power itself were too, were too early in the process to be able to say anything specific about that yet. A lot depends on scale. So until we have engaged with a solar developer, we don't, we can't anticipate what those details would be. It's also up to the state to define what constitutes a community shared solar array. That's what we're authorized under the Metta grant to explore. And that's what we will, we're seeking to establish there. But that has its own set of criteria, complications, so forth.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Peter?
No.
Okay.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank all of you for, for working on this. I know there's a lot of really specific details as well as a lot of tech to grapple with and legal details, but it's appreciated. I think it'll be a great thing for the town.
Well, we think so too. And the sooner we can start pushing electrons from the sun on behalf of the town, the better.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, so we do have a meeting at 6:15. In the meanwhile, we could, I mean, the next item is the town miniature job description. At the risk of not being able to really get into it, but maybe, maybe we can, because maybe it's kind of a simple discussion. I had the opportunity, had the chance to review it and made a lot of small changes to keep the grammar consistent and such, but also did a lot of mostly what I would call reorganizing in the responsibility section. Unfortunately, sometimes the track changes shows with the double lines that it was moved. But other times it is moved and doesn't show that.
When we're done, can you, you thought you could put, you knew why it was pretty much wrong on your left instead of the right?
I know how to do it both ways on my computer.
So maybe you can figure out how to get it back since I didn't change it. It changed it.
Do we want to send them to Sophie and have her?
Sophie did send me her version.
She sent me her version and then I worked on it this afternoon.
And I worked on it.
But I didn't know what the process was, so I thought we could send it all to her, get it all in there.
Right.
I think she did a great job.
I have, I do too. I have one big thing that bugs me and having looked through a bunch of other towns, many which look very similar to each other, I feel like somebody wrote one and everybody just took the same one and cleaned it. But like I still, I like it better put into categories, but I still feel like it's from the supply and to the particulars. It's like over has responsibility for overseeing all departments, changes the toilet paper. Like I'm not kidding. That's actually in there, right? It didn't get put that way, but it's responsible for janitorial duties in this building. Right? Which basically comes down to make sure there's toilet paper. That is kind of a ridiculous scope and the sheer, the sheer number of items on there, I don't know if that was part of what you were working on. I'm like, I felt like before I started to try to tackle that, I wanted to check in with you guys to see like, what do we want from this? Like, I could tweak words here and there. I could try and join them. I could try and make your items by combining ones that make sense together, sure. But what level of specificity do we want it to have? Because to me, if I had a job description that was like, you're responsible for all community relations and legal obligations and insurance and overseeing all employees and then financial planning for the town and also changing the toilet paper, I'd be like, what is up with you people? Like, to me, it's just kind of ridiculous.
Well, I, I do think that once you group, you know, two or three responsibilities that are similar and, and separate ones that are dissimilar too. I think I did that once or twice.
Right.
And maybe delete some that are redundant. It becomes a little bit more manageable. I still see what you're saying.
Yep. Do you think we could send now that we have this, would you send a version of it that doesn't have the strikeouts? Because it's really hard to figure out how this would actually read now there's just too many changes, which I totally, yeah, it's not your fault, but.
Send it to Sophie.
Yeah, sure. That too.
Get it in there.
Well.
Where we can go.
I can explain generally, we're trying to work on redundancies, pairing like responsibilities and separating unlike responsibilities. And also send her the actual mine stab at doing the same. I also added another category.
Okay.
I don't know if it was the right name of it or the right name for it or that we want this other category, but just other roles. I did write above recommended minimum qualifications. Because I felt like there were some specific responsibilities that don't necessarily, I mean, they're related to other things, but they kind of are on their own. On their own. I don't know that that is the right categorization, but.
I think rank for a major probably belongs under financial responsibilities.
I think, I forget. Yeah, that's where it was. Let me.
But I see your point. Okay.
Sheila, thank you for joining us.
Am I unmuted?
We can hear you.
You are unmuted. Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. And so do you want to explain the changes in assessment for Berkshire County Retirement?
Sure.
If that works for you and then we'll ask any questions we have.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. I want to thank Melissa for inviting me tonight. We have the board, the Berkshire County Retirement Board recently in the last few months has made some changes into how the assessment is actually allocated to our member units. So, and I guess the easiest way to explain how it's been done in the past is that at the end of every year, your treasurer will send us and we verify based on members' accounts, the amount of pensionable wages that have been paid by the town of Monterey. Then what we do is we take the aggregate total. So there's 44 member units and at the end of the year, we'll take the aggregate. And then basically what we do is divide your portion into the aggregate to come up with a percentage of your active member participation in the retirement system. So that is basically the way that the assessments have been allocated since probably the early eighties. Before that, they weren't really allocated anyway. They were just, it was kind of a bill and it was a pay as you go system. So the assessments weren't that, that high. I'm going, I wasn't here back then, but I can tell you that it's probably the same way that it was done back then. So basically what the board looked at the first time was in 2013 is looking at the total usage of the pension system. And there are, it is becoming more and more pronounced that there are towns and districts that use much more of the pension system than others. And so the general way of the salary appropriation didn't seem to be quite so fair today as it might've been 25 years ago. So what does that mean? The, it means that the board has moved to an actuarial assumption based on your town's usage of the total retirement system. So in the past, it was basically just salary. Now it will include salary, it will include retirees, it will include disabilities and it will also include group classification. So salaries remain the same. Retirees is just going to be based on the number of retirees that you may have from your town. Disabilities are significant because basically what a disability does, it allows especially an accidental disability, there's no service requirement for an accidental disability. Somebody could come into service and get, become injured and unable to do the essential functions of the job on the first day. So that offers somebody, a member, an accelerated benefit. So they would be entitled to 72% of the pay. So those disabilities can be very expensive to the pension system. And the last is group classification. So in Monterey, I don't believe that you have any paid firefighters. I believe all you have are paid police officers, but your police officers in Monterey are on what they call a group four classification. So they have an accelerated benefit based on the dangerousness of their job. So for all of us in Berkshire County, there's only two group classifications. There's one, which is administrative, like all of us. Employ, you know, a regular administrative employees. That does include labor though, highway, schools, that and such. And then your group four classifications are police and fire. So when you look at the usage on your retirees, you're also going to look at maybe some of your retirees that may be group four retirees. So they maximize their benefit at 55 rather than 65. So they have an accelerated benefit. So they are a little bit more expensive than a regular group one employee. So basically what the retirement board did is they voted to approve that. We are working on that actuarial process right now. At the retirement system, we had to go through and make sure that we categorized everybody correctly. So that everybody that you have is mostly in the county system, what we had to make sure of is that we didn't have people, that people were allocated to the correct unit. So if you were a shared employee or something like that, that, you know, their salary that's shared between the different towns would be appropriated properly. And then when the assessment is, the assessment letters go out in December for your July 1 budget, it will include that process, which is the the new allocation. Now, the new allocation is not something that is relatively easy for the retirement system to calculate as in the past. Towns could call and I actually have some information here in front of me and say, okay, my assessment went up. How come it went up? So usually the answer was pretty clear that additional employees had been added. So the salary figures had increased. There are some things in the salary that you, the salary methodology that you were not able to control. I think most of it has run out, but COVID had quite an effect on the assessments. Some towns continue to keep all of their employees employed and paid during the pandemic. Many towns laid them off, which meant that their salary, their pensionable salaries at the end of the year were much lower than they normally were. So it, it was enough in some of the units, especially the school districts to skew that salary figure for a couple of years, but I believe all of those, I think that what we're working on right now are 2022. The wages that we're actually using right now are about 18 months behind because we actually use real actual December 31st figures for actuary. So I think that we have just run out on a year end 2022. So I think most of the COVID, the bump that some of the towns might've gotten is over. But that's the process. There is a couple of things though, that I'd like to, that weren't necessarily, that are connected to the appropriation and that change that are good news. And the first is that we just completed our actuarial valuation for January 1 of 2023. And the good news is that we are actuarially fully funded. So we are at 105%. So it's a good problem to have. It is one that we'll, you will see the hopefully very significant effect on your assessments in year three. The board has and will, is looking at adopting a funding schedule next week that will allow the retirement system to, your, your assessments for this year for 2024, the total assessment will not change. And after, I didn't, I apologize. I didn't bring that funding schedule with, home with me tonight, but you will see in year three that you will start seeing a 20% reduction and then the following year is another 20% reduction. So by the time we get to 2030, you will, your assessment will probably be about half of what it is right now because the unfunded liability will be gone. So as you, if you are doing your, if you're doing any financial audits or anything like that, the retirement system has always been an asset on your balance sheet because our, our funding level, which was well above the 80, 88 or 89% the last time we had it done. Now it is 105% and the, the schedule itself is worked in a little bit of a, that's why the, they didn't go right to what we call a normal cost to the 50% right away. Because there are some actuarial losses and some investments over the last year or so that still need to be washed out. And the other thing is, is the board wanted to make sure that there was at least somewhat of a cushion in that 105% because if economic factors as far as the investments, if there's a significant downturn, you would go from, you know, the assessments are the assessment. So if it's not enough, they'd have to increase it. And they didn't want to be in the position to have to do that in the future. So that is very, very good news. The other thing is, is the advisory board met this morning and for your retirees, the retirees in the Berkshire County Retirement System are currently receiving a COLA, cost of living only on the first $14,000 of their pension. So the board had planned many years ago that when they finally did reach, they, they, the COLA base was increased from 12 to 14,000 back in 2012. So approximately, I'd say probably about 2016, 2017, as the fully funding became more and more a possibility. The board had decided that when they did reach that, that they would increase the COLA base. And so the board voted last month to increase it to 16,000. The advisory board, which is the legislative authority over the retirement board, approved that increase this morning. So as of July 1 of 2024, the COLA base for our retirees will now be based on $16,000, which is about what our average pension is right now, right around 16,000. And back in 2013, the average pension was right around 14. So that does affect a lot of our, a lot of our retirees. So that's kind of good news for them because the last couple of years have been a struggle with the inflation and things of that nature. So with that, I know that's kind of a quick explanation, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. So feel free to, feel free to ask.
Thank you.
No, I mean, I think it's great news that being overfunded in today's world is good. Thank you. I mean, they're doing their job.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question, Sheila.
Sure.
So you said that the pensionable wages is how the assessment used to be based solely on pensionable wages? And so you added the number of retirees, disability and group classification into the assessment?
Yes.
Were there clear winners and losers as far as, you said that it's a very, it results in a very different assessment. I mean, was it that small towns were using the system more and paying into it last or vice versa?
No, no, really. I think what has kind of transpired over the years is that for, and for a lot of reasons, none of them really bad, but there's less, shall we say, shared services between towns. So what we were finding is that there were towns that were growing significantly with, you know, police departments and you know, even we have some now that have fire departments. And, you know, in the past, fire departments were mostly volunteers and I don't think anybody has a lot of volunteers left in those departments anymore. So the other thing was probably one of the biggest things, and it's not, and it's not really so much of a financial as it is a management issue, is that some towns are really very, very good at managing personnel and managing injuries on, on, whether they're police and fire or they're just workers comp injuries. There's others that are not. And that's expensive for the retirement system. So it really wasn't fair to those who manage well versus those who do not. And, and when I say manage well, I, I want everybody to understand that there's no issue with people. This isn't about fakery or trickery or anything like that. People go to work, they get hurt and they're not able to do the essential functions of the job. However, some of those situations are managed better than others. And some of them that don't manage well, they seem to be recurring. So like I said, those are, those are expensive for the retirement system. We did a full in 2013. We actually, the board almost did this back in 2013. And what we found that there was two towns that we did not expect to be outliers. And their increases were significant at that point. We don't believe that those situations exist for those towns. So if you, like for instance, a school district, school districts have lots of employees and they have lots of retirees. But they don't have a lot of group four employees. So they may or may not see a big, a change in their, in their assessment. Some towns have grown exponentially as far as their, their group four employees. So they have full departments and they will see an increase in their assessments because of that. But they're using a bigger share. So, you know, the board kind of looked at it. Well, you know, it's kind of getting to the point now where, especially now that we're fully funded and that assessments will be decreasing over the next couple of years. The effect of that probably will not be so, as significant to many of the towns and districts going forward. So as it would have been in 2013, so.
Thank you. That makes sense. One other unrelated question while you're here.
Sure.
We're, we're transitioning to a new payroll system, as you probably know.
Okay.
And just wanted, we're trying to figure out for time in attendance where exactly we need, you know, hourly reports for employees and for people who may be on salary. And how, to what extent does Berkshire County Retirement need hourly logs for employees? Does that factor into the pension that they would receive on their retirement?
It does. And so we are, you know, as far as I know, you guys are still using Minfin, right? Municipal Finance Company for your treasurer?
Yes.
Okay. Um, sorry about, sorry about that. So, so the, the two things actually that I, and it came up just the other day and I really haven't had time to talk to you about it, but one of the things with, was. But one of the things with, with you using a municipal finance company, I don't want, I want to um get back to your question in a sec, is that you don't have an official treasurer for the town. And so what I would suggest that is even though even though you are um not able to, uh, and you're not doing, um, the Minfin is doing the, the work for you. Right now, you're not able to vote at advisory board level because you don't have a designated treasurer. So even if it's for no money and it's just a, a figurehead for the town to say, we need a treasurer um, and we're going to appoint such and such. You should do it officially at the select board level to, to nominate somebody to be your official treasurer because in the future, as things are being voted on, um, the, the uh company that you have doesn't, they, they don't qualify to vote. So you actually have to have a real person. So um, even if it's a select board member, it might be, we might, might want to pick somebody that's able to attend potentially one or two meetings a year um that we might have at the retirement board and/or it might be remote. But to, at least they would be able to maintain the capability to actually cast a vote. So if you do that, um, please let us know at the retirement board that you've taken an official vote and you've nominated somebody and this is the person that you have um assumed the, be the, for voting purposes, the uh town, town treasurer. So.
Well, just to follow up before we go too far, so we, we do always appoint a town treasurer.
Okay.
And we've been advised by our town council to appoint the name of the firm, not the person. So we, our town treasurer is Mass Munifin. But we can look into
Yeah.
maybe how to handle that. But that was advice that we received, which that points to the.
And, and maybe if, if you, right, and if you don't mind, if you have a, some kind of a legal ruling or even if it's just an email or something like that, please send it to me because what I'll do is I'll send it out. Cause I, you're not the only one. I think I have two or three units that have a municipal finance company. So um, and it, because this, and I'll, I'll pass it on to our legal counsel to figure out a way. I'm sure that they're probably doing it for financial liability purposes and bonding or whatever you got to do for treasurers. Um, this is really more for voting um on local at the advisory board level. So it wouldn't really have any financial value at all to the position other than the ability to vote, uh, to represent the town of Monterey.
I, I think what she's saying is Munifin won't do that for us. So if we want to have voting capability, we need to figure out how to have a person who's willing to serve in that capacity to vote when they vote on things.
Well, I mean, if, I mean, if we wanted to, we could put it in their contract.
It may not, they may not be willing to serve in this regard.
Well, but I mean, we could.
Yeah, the Minfin company.
It's a concern that we don't have an appointed treasurer and so that would normally be the person who serves on the advisory board.
And so, so legally, that's what I have to, you tell me, if you send me what you have on file for you legally, what your counsel has advised you to do, and I'm just going to pass it on to our legal counsel. He's the expert in retirement. He can tell us if there's a way around it or provide you with the direction that you need to uh legally appoint somebody that could represent the town of Monterey at uh the retirement board level. Um, it's not going to be, and it's not going to be for financial or, you know, there probably wouldn't even be a signer on anything. I think your Minfin company is probably going to be the one that's going to hold all of the, those duties and responsibilities. But, and maybe that's how um our legal counsel would provide the info is just to say, you know what, it will, he'll give you a kind of a legal motion, if you will, of how to appoint the person with any duties and responsibilities so that that person would serve at your whim, you know, as long as you, they're appointed, they would have no specific term or anything. But they would have to be appointed in a, a properly so that they could vote. Because right now, you and I think have two other towns currently don't have the ability to cast a vote.
Okay. Well, I will, I will forward you because we do have it in writing from our town council about appointing terms rather than people.
Now, um, back to your um, your uh payroll program. The hours do have an effect on pensions. And how it affects people's pensions, two things. First of all, it's membership. So somebody to maintain their full-time membership in the retirement system has to work a minimum of twenty hours per week in a permanent a position with uh guaranteed regular and recurring wages. So the hours are very important for, for those individuals that are part-time employees. They might only be twenty or twenty-four hours a week or something like that. And it's very important because if somebody goes below twenty hours a week, they are no longer going to be able to, um, they won't be get, getting um a full-time credible service. Their service would be prorated. So the hourly aspect of an employee is very important. So how do we differentiate? There's a couple of different um situations, if you will, or, or, or um employment uh processes. So the first is the easiest. If you have an hourly employee and the, and everybody in Monterey that's a full-time employee works forty hours a week, we would expect that their weekly payroll would reflect forty hours a week. Um, the, and the same goes for a part-time employee that's over twenty hours. So it's twenty-four hours a week, whatever. It, it should be posted that way. Um, the, the two that are, uh, actually the one that's the easiest is, do you, do you have any elected officials that remain in um Monterey? Cause elected officials.
That are on Berkshire County Retirement?
That are on Berkshire County Retirement. Because if you have, I, I don't know if you have.
Our tax collector is a town administrator in New Marlboro and she's an elected tax collector in Monterey.
Okay. Oh, so she's elected with you. Okay. And she's in the system. So anyone that's an elected official is considered a full-time employee. So we don't need to record any hours for them. If they're elected, they're just given full-time service. They don't have to. And as long as they're elected, um, we just need to know uh for enrollment purposes that they're in an elected position, what their terms are so that we can calculate the proper service. So an elected official doesn't need any hours. Now, the salaried people are kind of the ones that fall into the middle of um, between a salary and a stipend. So I want to be very clear that a stipend position itself does not constitute uh enrollment in the retirement system. So if you're receiving a stipend for anybody, pick a tree warden, we have a tree warden. Unless there is um an appointed number of hours for that position, they wouldn't even make it into retirement anyways. So a stipend doesn't qualify. Your salaried employees, if you have people that are on salary and the expectation is it's a full-time position and they're going to receive a certain amount of money for that full-time position, then um it is, it is what you would consider a forty-hour a week. Or whatever, uh, cause some are on thirty-five, some are thirty-seven and a half. I don't know what Monterey uses for a full-time employee. But we would assume that there, those are the ones that are at the full-time. So the ones that we struggle with are people who are on a stipend, but you say it's a salary. It can't be both. So if they're on a stipend.
So what's the difference?
A stipend doesn't have any allotted hours. You say, I'm going to pay you a thousand dollars a month to check on every tree in Monterey. I don't care if it takes you one hour or a hundred. That's what you're going to get. That's a stipend. There's no hours attributed to that. So that would not constitute a position. And actually, we'll say even more, say, because you have to be at least at five thousand dollars uh annually to be enrolled anyways. So um it, so say we're going to pay you seven thousand dollars a year. This is your stipend. You're going to be the tree warden. You're going to check on all the trees. And you just say, this is what we're paying you. If it takes you one hour, it's one hour. If it takes you a hundred, it's a hundred. Takes you a thousand, it's a thousand. But that's all we're going to pay you. We're not going to assign any hours. Well, that's a stipend. That's not a salary. Um, and so a stipend would not constitute eligibility for membership in the retirement system. Now, if you have, um, it comes up a little bit more with like building inspectors. I got a building inspector and they're going to be here in the office eight hours a week. But um they're really going to be often, you know, running and um they've got to do well. You know, sometimes the building permits in the summer, they're, they're a lot more because there's a lot more work to do. And in December and January, they might not be in the office that much. Well, if you're paying them for a certain amount of, a certain amount of a salary based on a certain number of hours, then those hours have to be worked. And they would have to be notated. Can't be open-ended. So it's the salaries and the stipends that we kind of stumble on a little bit. I mean, some people are there. I mean, you probably have um in Monterey, what, six or eight full-time employees? They're there Monday through Friday?
Yeah, nine.
Nine, okay. And so I, they're assumed that they work Mondays, and just guessing, but Mon- Monday through Friday, nine to five or eight to four or something like that. So they're working a, a thirty-five, forty-hour a week um for their salary. They should be notated as a full-time employee and the number of hours worked based on a full-time employee in the town of um Monterey is thirty-seven and a half hours a week.
So do hours calculate in the pension more than just eligibility being the minimum twenty hours on a regular basis? Or do they actually factor into the amount paid out in the pension?
Um, well, hours do count because if you don't have the, if you don't have uh twenty hours a week or more, you're not going to, A, you're not going to meet enrollment requirements. So uh you would have to go to OBRa. And the hours. What's that?
Sorry to interrupt. I understand the twenty-hour minimum, but is, do they affect the pension beyond that?
No, no, because we don't, because we don't, yeah, we don't prorate service unless somebody go, falls below twenty hours a week. So what the assumption is, is that if somebody is a twenty-two-hour-a-week employee, that the salary would reflect twenty-two hours a week, not a full-time salary of somebody who is working forty hours a week. So um, that's why we, we grant the uh, we grant the um, we grant full-time credible service for anything over twenty hours.
Sheila, when you and I talked on the phone, you had told me that if you wanted the hours um for people that were less than twenty hours because it comes, becomes a problem for you, should they ever get a job in another community or want buyback and then you can't prove that they had it and they only get one month for every year of credible service, right? So you think it's a best practice to actually collect hours for everyone?
It is. I mean, the thing is, is there are some people that um, there, there are some people that wouldn't be um that hours wouldn't matter. That would be an elected official, it wouldn't matter. But you're right. Um, if we don't have uh hours and hourly rate and the number of hours to calculate and a lot of the small towns do, people come in and they're working maybe eight or ten hours a week and then you decide they're a good employee or the job expands and you want to hire them, they're eligible, eligible to buy back that credible service. And they can use their OBRa money to do it. So, but if I don't have the number of hours that a person worked and we have no record of it, then it would fall into a uh, something like a stipend. And somebody might actually be, you know, eligible for five or six months of credible service based on the hours that they worked versus if I have no record of their hours, I treat it as a stipend. They get one month for the whole year. So it would have, it would negatively affect them. So it is a best practice if you have people um and you can do this in your payroll system to um, to uh put in the hours. Um, some of the, some of the um, and I'd have to talk to um, is it Teresa? Who's the one that does, who's the one that does your payroll at um? Sarah? Sarah, that's it. And I can talk to Sarah. I, I think they're using Harper's, aren't they?
Yes.
They do. Yeah. And we can talk to um, we can talk to her to also come up with some codes that are um, would indicate what uh those uh hourly or what those uh employees actually equate to um, so that we can keep track. It really is more important for people who are not in the system um, or people who fall below twenty hours a week to make sure that their hours are recorded properly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions? All right. I think you answered all of our questions, Sheila. So thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much. If you have any other questions, um, you can always give us a call. Thank you so much for your time.
Well, and I, I'll be following up with you about um mass Munifin.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
I have a lot of questions, yes. So I, I had the impression that the main focus of this question is with regard to the assessment, right? That seemed to be the, the office that was questioning why they needed to track their hours.
That's Don.
Right. So my, my question is, how, like, what do we conclude on the basis of this?
Well, to conclude is, I think it would be hard to have particular rules for different people. So I think you have to do best practice and say you track the hours of everybody. Cause you know, it, it could get lost in the system, you know, but you just have to do it because it may not be Don, but it could be the next person that comes in, you know, or something like that and you're not doing it. So it's something you could almost put in the manual. You, you're going to be responsible for tracking your hours. There's going to be a system. I, I, you can't cherry pick and say, well, he can't do it and this person can't. When you have the retirement person saying it's the best practice, Don will probably not go on to another township and get a full-time job. I mean, but I don't think you can, you know, I, I think you got to watch that where you just say, well, no, you can't, but you can, you know? You just have to have that rule. I understand what you're saying. I, that, you know, it's, it's not like a large corporation where, you know, they're doing it. People move around to different townships. So.
I was curious, I still, I'm not sure that I'm fully clear on what a salary is versus a stipend.
I think like you guys are a stipend.
Yeah.
We're a stipend. I think we're under five thousand dollars.
No, you actually over five thousand. But you don't have, she's saying that you don't have, she's saying you have to do the job at the select board, no matter how many hours it takes you. So you don't have like a schedule?
Yeah. Well, there's no, no.
The only one that she, the tax collector didn't have to do it. Cause she's a.
See, and I think that in this particular case, she does because she can buy back her time here.
Yeah. Because, because she works in one of those towns. Yeah. So what I understood was that a stipend, um, you're, you're given a certain amount of money to do a job.
The tree warden.
Right, the tree warden, for example. So no hours are mentioned, your hours aren't tracked. But the amount that you're, that you get is fixed. However, you're not eligible for the retirement.
Right.
And so you'd have to be willing to completely give up or understand that that was not part of the package. Like, I don't think the fee ordering was expecting to get retirement. And I know, I know, it's like, we have to be in OBRa, which is kind of funny too, because we're over five K, I guess, but.
Well, what I would find interesting, I mean, I've been paying into OBRa a very small amount for, for a long time. Like seven years or something, maybe, maybe six or seven years.
The stipends, because you wrote the fire department?
Yeah. So I have no clue. I mean, I assume it's all stipends. And like Sheila was saying, it's stipend, so one month counts for the year or something. But I.
The one month for the year, I think is if you go from one to the other. So if you went from OBRa to the retirement.
Kind of retirement.
Yeah, you can't carry the full weight of your hours with you. It's kind, unless you have recorded hours.
It would be like if you suddenly became the library director here and getting my pension benefits and you wanted to buy back your fire and your select board time. You wouldn't be able to because you don't have clocked in and clocked out times. You'd only get one month of credit service for every year you serve.
So you'd get seven months of credit service.
But I think all. The way I understand it, uh, it wouldn't even, I would never have that option even if I kept track of my hours on the select board because it's a elected position. They don't, they just don't care. If it's an elected position.
I'm not sure how you would apply for a fire. It might, you know, if you ever went on to become a, you know, a full-time position in another town.
I don't know. I mean, but it could deserve some clarity because should I, I mean, it's not about me, but should someone in my position be tracking their hours? I think the way I understood it, my gut is that it doesn't matter if you're stipend. But I'm still unclear on what the difference is between stipend and salary. She said if it's under five thousand, it's not eligible for the program, but she didn't say the five thousand is in the stipend versus salary. So there's probably some follow-up, you know, questions to be.
I wonder if she has a document or it's all a bit new.
Yeah, the difference between salary and stipend would be helpful to know exactly.
Pensions, they're, they have to be cleared. And you just can't change the rules in the middle. We got, I think it's FCC.
The confusing thing to me is that I had the sense that she, she was suggesting that you could have a salaried job that was less than full-time, right? Like, I, I had that sense, maybe incorrect. But my understanding from what she was saying is that you could have a salaried job that was like twenty-two hours a week. And I'm like, really? That's a thing? You could have an hourly job? really? That's a thing? You could have an hourly job that's twenty-two hours a week, but it's.
Yeah, I've heard someone.
I, yeah, it's, it's the amount of money it's paying.
Right, so.
But it made me wonder if he's stipend technically according to this.
Also, if he's less than twenty, he's not eligible.
He's not eligible now, but if he were, if a physician, let's not make it by a physician. So if the board went up over twenty hours, they could buy back for seventeen and a half hours a week. But only if they were clocking in, clocking out. If they were just saying, oh, hey, I worked seventeen and a half hours, but I can't prove it.
Yeah.
They would only get one month for every year.
So.
So then it becomes this, if you don't, basically, it's almost like if you keep track of your hours, it's a salary and if you don't, it's a stipend.
Kinda. It does seem like a strange rule.
I think.
I, yeah, I don't have, I'm not fully, I completely understand where Frank is coming from. Just keep track, everyone keep track, then we don't have any problems. Except there does seem to be a little bit of a gray area, like the select board members aren't keeping track. Well, yeah, we are not.
We'd be minimum wage of a while.
We'd be, wearing over, wearing over, not virtual kind of retirement, but she also said that's kind of the most important. Is when you're not in first year counting.
Yeah, because if you switch it, you wanna be able to take it with you.
But I actually think you can be in virtual kind of retirement because you're five thousand or more elected officials.
Okay. Jeff Zimmerman says, the term stipend refers to a form of compensation is paid to certain individuals for service rendered, other work, or while receiving training. Stipends are often provided in lieu or in addition to a regular salary. It's generally for a specific service rendered.
Like tree ward. And according to the Virginia County website, it says elected officials who earn more than five thousand annually have the option whether or not they will join the system. Elected officials earn less than five thousand annually will be enrolled in OBRa.
But it's, we don't, but then it's the minimum twenty hours a week requirement.
She says, please, it says, please contact our office regarding eligibility. I think it was a assumption that lasts than twenty hours. No, but if elected official, if you earn more than five thousand, you're, you're eligible because of the amount.
Right. And it's probably a recognition that we are off working more hours than we're paid for.
I don't know. There's remaining question, there's more questions than always that I have.
You just take a lifetime figuring out pension.
Okay. So.
It sort of seems to me the upshot is everybody should just keep track of their hours and, and there are some fallout.
Yeah, I think for the people that are, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna kick Jack Ma, but for the people that are, they show you, you have to have a rule. We should look at it. We're doing the manual, you know, you're responsible to keep track of it and put in there. It's, could impact your pension.
But you're an exception to the rule?
Oh, I, I, I'll track my hours.
I mean, I mean, this, for those of us who are already in the retired camp, it's sort of like coast to Newcastle. Like, we're not expecting to get that. We're not gonna, even if we were entitled to it, we probably would take it. And, and so it doesn't, it's sort of a moot point. But on you, on the other hand, are definitely in the camp where you should be thinking about tracking that stuff.
Yeah, my defined pensions are becoming a thing of the past.
Yeah, right.
Those are the retro funding.
Those are definitely.
Might fully fund it, well, if.
That's awesome. Real host, wow.
So to change topics to the administrative job description, how do we want to move forward? My edit, should I send this to Sophia?
I think we send them to Sophia and then we get them and then we can discuss it.
When we send them to Sophia, could you stipulate that at some point we would like to get them? But it, even though I wanna see what you did, I need to be able to see what it would actually look like and when there's tons of moving around, it becomes untenable. Yes, a clean copy.
You want a clean copy?
Of his? Yeah, of like he did.
I, I finished up mine late this afternoon, so, I mean, I, I could send it out in the morning.
But I do want to, so like, I had ideas for things to change, but I didn't wanna start doing that unless there was clarity as a group of what we wanted that to look like. Right? I, I know personally, the sheer number of bullets is to me untenable. It's awkward. It, it's like, I, I know why a lot of the, like, I'm gonna call it picky stuff, but what I really mean is very specific items are in there and some of them exactly.
Be more like when you go under administrative responsibilities to go all the way to Y.
Yep.
Susan, one thing that I did that I think helps is not only have them in the folded groups, but group them within that in a way that's kind of makes sense. So coordinating base, essentially with the HR director for the HR functions, coordinating with IT for the IT functions, they're kind of in a similar vein. So I, in my list, I put things like that next to each other, not in the same bullet, but kind of next to each other. I forgot there was one other like that. Well, first point of contact for the accountant and treasurer, which kind of works primarily with these people. If you're in the organization, you wanna contact IT or this.
Right, right, right.
Kind of all in that vein. Now, I, I don't know that my edit is the master edit that solves all the problems. I think some of it is by its nature, some are, have to be more specific, specific and some have to be more vague. But I think once you combine redundant one, or combine similar ones, delete redundancy saves.
There were very much, yeah, it didn't seem like there was a lot of redundancy saves.
There were a few.
There was a few, but not a lot.
Once you do that and then you group them within groups, it becomes a bit more manageable to read through, I think.
And I guess at that point, I think it's worth taking that stuff to then make the decision of how many of them could, like, do they all necessarily need to be in separate bullets? And do we really need to be as specific? Now, the answer may be yes. I'm not inherently saying the answer's.
Well, you, you got that, where they left where you go A to Y, under the responsibility and then.
Right.
Um, you know, those are, some of those are just building issues. Or whatever, I, I'm not.
And some of them.
That's where I, I didn't spend a lot of time back there, but I mean, I, I remember reading it. I was like, wow.
Uh huh, I know. I mean, and, you know, I would be inclined to say that some of them could be combined, like transportation permits and yearly liquor license applications. To me, there's a bunch of administrative roles that could be, like, maybe they would get lost. So the reason to put them in separate bullets is so that, look, this is different from that. The reason to combine them is that, yeah, there's a lot of administrative tasks that are kind of related to each other. Because there's a big difference between that kind of stuff. I like, I don't think that onboarding new staff and training people comes under the same rubric as acting as another republic.
That's why, that's why I did other roles at the end.
Right, right, I get that.
Because it just didn't seem to fit in. So what we'll do is Frank had his edits.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send it out.
I'll send mine to Sophia. Susan, you send your edits to Sophia.
I'll, I'll send mine too, but kind of small because I didn't wanna do that other stuff until I had a sense of what you guys were hoping it to look like. I don't wanna spend a ton of time completely reorganizing it and just like saying, well, what do you think of this? Because I wanted us to have a sense of what we thought that had to look like. Yes. I'm willing to do it. I just don't wanna do it for no, like, it's just gonna be shut down.
Go to Sophia.
Okay.
Sophia.
Sophia, yeah. Um, and I mean, I looked at a bunch of, I don't, have you guys looked at other towns ones?
I looked at one of the municipality, I looked at some of the others, but.
I mean, I.
I haven't done that yet, no.
It's.
I did a little bit, but I think, you know, from my job experience, what we had.
Yeah, it was just interesting to me because like a bunch of them looked like they were from the same mold. Like they tweaked some, I don't know who wrote it, but like you look at Conway's, there's a whole bunch of, I had a file with a bunch of them from probably a previous iteration. A bunch of them looked like they're almost verbatim. They took the same thing and tweaked little things.
Well, you know what there was too, Melissa? What, didn't MMA have like a?
They have, yeah. I bet it was that.
So maybe it was the MMA.
I bet it was, because it has like physician title, department reports to grade level date, FLSA status right at the top. That was one. Um. And the thing that I did notice is it has a lot of key stuff in it, but it has a lot less of, um, some of it's particular, oversees all town automated management information systems, make recommendations for improvements, implement appropriate policies. But in general, it seemed like it was much more like, these are the kind of skills we want you to have. We want you, this is what we want you to be overseeing by making sure that you're getting people to work together and you can do a lot of different opinions. Work better than that. But I, I felt like it was a little more overview and a little less like, and make sure there's plenty of paper in the bathroom.
Well, so, and I, I would.
Do do that, just so you know.
Yes, I know.
Well, it lasts, so I wanted to know.
If I had to guess, Susan, the, the town administrators, the town administrators in towns like Conway, which I'm not that familiar with Conway, but I think I know where it is, right? So they're probably all kind of developed into somewhat similar catch-all positions. Like Melissa sent us the list of town administrators who clerk for various boards and do various administrative tasks. So I think as long as we're going to have a town administrator accomplish these things, it should be kind of in the job description because I think that you lose something when it becomes, I understand why it becomes a catch-all position in towns like Monterey and Conway. But at least to know what that is, that way we can identify where potentially, oh, and I wrote it in my comments, but if the town administrator is clerking for the zoning board, taking minutes for the zoning board of appeals and the board of health, doesn't really relate to the overall goals of the town administrator position. And so you can identify where can we take off administrative tasks like that from a town administrator position to allow the town administrator to focus on the higher level goals, if you have it written down in the job description. And everyone's.
If you're recognizing, in other words, if you're recognizing that they're doing it and to the job description, you could at some point make the exact decision to remove that from their job responsibility because you want them to focus elsewhere, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, or in a, in a restructuring period of saying, okay, well, we're actually gonna remove taking minutes for the zoning board of appeals from the job description. That way they're gonna be more focused on the other goals, which are, which it's probably easier to find someone to take on minute-taking responsibilities in some cases. And that way it focuses on a higher level stuff. But I would rather if it's being done, it be in the job description.
Right.
But I, I, my guess is that in other towns like Conway, they're just, and kind of the way that Monterey previously had done it more so, you're just kind of letting it become a catch-all position, which doesn't, and, and I understand why that happens and it's not necessarily wrong, but at least to know what it is.
And I, I'm not, I, I agree. I was the one who said I thought we should identify all those roles so it's clear that, like, we're expecting this of the person who's filling that role, right? And they should be properly compensated and it should be properly recognized. So I, I'm not opposed to it in theory. I just felt overwhelmed by the sheer number of bullet points because at some point you can't really take it in. And I think that's a real thing. That you get overwhelmed by the tiny little individual items. But it might be, maybe it has to be that way, or maybe it's fixed up by having a larger, like, you know, a sort of lead-in to the leadership with a lead-in paragraph saying what the important concept is about leadership, what we're expecting in leadership. And then list some of the, and, you know, individual tasks would include or something of that kind. Um, so that when you're read it, you're hit with, this is the expectation about leadership. This is the expectation of help finance. This is the expectation. And, and then there's these other duties that I also have to do that are sort of clerical administrative. It, it's just an idea.
Yeah. Well, I think, well, if you send your, even if you don't, I mean, you could go to track changes, but if, if your ideas are more.
I'll say, I'll drive something up to the meeting.
But if your ideas are more broad, send those to Sophia. Frank will send his Sophia. I'll send mine to Sophia.
Okay.
And then she can take it from there. So tre- treasure contract we don't have for tonight, right? Account contract with their pension, so it's one year for the amount previously specified at town meeting. One thing is.
Did anything substantive change from the one last year?
Yes, kind of.
Which is?
But I, I don't think that they're, they're, I, I think they're substantive, but they're not reasons to not go along with it, which is just that he's guaranteeing what's two business account to the six.
Oh, and I don't think that's an issue in the, once again, in four years, you know, he's really only come for town meeting. And the only ones that I have to have Lisa come here to actually work on a project with the remote. And we, we, he beat weekly and, so.
How is his charges compared to the last year? Is he up?
So we voted it on town meeting. I think we are up a few. Three percent, I want to say. But one, so one overarching thing about this contract is unlike mass munifin to the treasurer contract, it doesn't line up with the fiscal year. So then we want, when they want more money for the, because of inflation, it becomes a little awkward, not really awkward, because we just have to, they're only gonna get thirty-two seventy-five and through next September, if they want more money, if they want thirty-three fifty, that just has to start October one. And I assume next year they're gonna want some kind of an increase. So I did at one point.
Do we have a, I, do we have a clarity, is it just a half a stance of when we originally hired them?
Not entirely. Um, it's partially that. It was not initially, I think initially it was supposed to end July thirtieth.
The June thirtieth, that there was.
The select board at the time changed it because I guess right after the end of fiscal year, there's a bit of work to be done to finalize, closing up the books. And so having the contract go through the end of September is more realistic. If we ever wanted to change accountants, they wouldn't change on the end of the fiscal year.
But I think the previous contract that ended on June thirtieth actually did say that they would finish, close out the books, I believe. I think there was, there was an issue with. I think that sounds familiar. Right, and I think there was, this was the issue that I think when John Silver and Terry and the accountant and everybody were all in here.
So what happened was, yeah, there was some end of year reporting. I don't even think we knew about that at the time, no.
I, I feel like that all happened around the time of the contract renewal and that's what.
I think, okay, I actually remember. So, so Eric came in and we discussed the end of year reporting issue. And he did a really good job of explaining what went on and what, what went wrong. And so that, well, you can see it right there.
This is the thing that came out of the, when the warrant was, yeah, the minutes were, okay. Right.
It was the, the tax recap.
The tax recap.
There was, it should have been entered in one place, but it was entered in two, so it canceled itself out. And we ended up with an extra four hundred thousand dollars of recap.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I figured you were talking about.
And there was a couple people, including the accountant, had signed off on it and the town clerk. The town clerk had inputted it in the wrong place and then the accountant was responsible for reviewing it and signed off on the review of it and. Anyways, Eric did a good job of explaining it. And then, yeah, then you can see it was handwritten and the day that we signed the contract with him. But that was also kind of a two-year contract at the time.
So I, I mean, I don't have a problem with it.
I don't have a problem with it. Sometimes I have this problem where I just mention things that I think.
Are important. No, that's, it's a good thing to know because we declined to work towards having it enough.
There was a couple more. So it's, I think it was L and M. So these are the two provisions that were deleted. They're kind of about maintaining records. For a period of seven years, the contractor shall maintain those books, records, documents included, but not limited to records, accounting records and purchase orders that are sufficient to document those activities carried out or in accordance with all applicable laws and regulations. The record shall contain all information pertaining to grant awards, authorizations, obligations, unobligated balances, assets, liabilities, outlays and income. The contractor shall upon request turn over all said records to the town. The record shall be maintained for a period of seven years from the date of program closeout or if such records. Or if such records become the subject of audit findings until such findings are resolved, whichever is later. The contract, this is a separate provision, the contractor shall make all books, accounts, records, reports. Filed and other papers, things of property that relate to the activities under this agreement, available at all reasonable times for inspection, review and audit by the town. And its authorized representatives or of the Commonwealth, the auditor of the Commonwealth or any other authorized local state or federal official or representative.
And so he took it out because it's not part of his normal contract, but you have access to all of that, I I can get. It's all in our accounting system, I can give you that at any time you need, and it doesn't go with him, it goes with the accounting software.
I see, okay. So basically, the we're, the records are kept in the software that we have access to, even if we were to terminate with this particular account. Any doubt?
That is everything that I'm aware of.
But who's in charge of the accounting software?
Me in charge of.
Uh, well, you're, he's, you read those paragraphs, L and M, that says basically he would keep this.
We contract with Vadar for that, so it's completely separate from theirs.
Separate, okay, separate, alright, alright. Do they have anything in their field that says they'll keep it, or they're, or is it a? Yeah, I'm I'm just curious just.
Now, you raised the issue.
Raised the issue, because they may have a, you know, it might be certain amount of storage.
Oh.
And then they would say, you, you know, I get you five years, but not seven or something like that.
They're more likely to say, we're gonna charge you an extra X number, because you've exceeded your, you know, terabytes of storage space.
And so.
We're gonna bill you monthly another two ninety-nine.
And Vader's in the cloud, right, hosted in the cloud, I don't really know what that means.
It's in the cloud?
It means that there's a giant server somewhere that adds it on there.
Have you ever, you've never seen a storage? Those, they're huge, they're 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 unbelievable, they have no windows. Just huge generators and they go hundreds of thousands per feet. Just all computer racks.
So it's not really a cloud, it's just a warehouse somewhere.
They they call it a cloud because it's a nicer picture. Warehouse, they should call it the the I warehouses.
You know, it it it's amazing.
Be honest.
You don't know, it's just.
Well, the sheer volume of it, internationally is insane.
Yeah, but I mean, outside Dallas airport, they're just built from the buildings of the department.
Right.
They're just buildings, they have no markings, all kinds, no windows, no office store.
Well, I remember what it was like to go into stacks, like, I don't know how much time you spent at libraries, but I spent a lot of time in libraries. And there were, there were, you know, enormous buildings with floors and floors below and floors and floors above. With endless stacks of books. That was old record, like, if you went all over the world and thought about the number of books in libraries.
You don't have to get, go any deep into that, now we're just.
Into Vadar.
Yeah, we.
But the question is.
We've got some coverage.
Yeah, and that, we, well, we really need to figure that out with Vadar, where where information is, because like. I think as Melissa explained, the way I understand it is uh. We per- we purchase Vadar and have a separate agreement with them.
Right.
And so.
But we wanna make sure that they're maintaining our records for at least seven years.
I mean, that's a normal period, seven years, or packs of seven years.
So I would move to uh for the slide board to approve the accounting contract with Eric Kincher. Which goes through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Is there any others, is there any other discussion on that? Okay, we'll call a vote.
Yes.
And yes, so that's unanimous approval of the contract with Eric Kincher. Which we already appointed. In June for the fiscal year.
So it's darn good, we gave him a contract.
But that's an interesting.
Do you want me to ask him to just make it through June thirtieth?
No, I like this, I just wanted to point it out.
Right.
Do we have a signature? No, I actually really don't mind it, because a lot of stuff around the time of the end of the fiscal year that this. Isn't bad for me. Because actually, you know what, I thought he was gonna go for a two-year contract, because his other one was two, and I thought about, should we try to go for two or three years? But at the end of the day, this probably makes a lot more sense for everyone. Because we had just talked about, like, with tree contracts, but not, maybe we should be going for three-year set contracts. But for this one, one year kind of makes sense.
Why?
Why do you say it makes sense?
Yeah.
Because. I mean, I think continuity is good, but God forbid, like, there's problems, you know, and.
Well, there's, there should be something, there's usually a severability.
Oh, there is severability, there is severability in there for cause and without cause, but. If we, if we, I mean, my thing was, if we walked into a three-year, it's gonna go up every year, he's gonna want it to go up every year now. So is it gonna be a, I didn't think it'd be a huge money saver, but.
It might not be, but at least it it lets us plan from what we're gonna read.
Well, here is, here is the opportunity that we have, which is that we have the treasurer contract. Um, which Sarah hasn't proposed or anything yet.
She thanks you for your version, we're talking tomorrow at eight-thirty, so.
Okay, so if the board wants, that's a one year, and it does fall in the fiscal year. If the board wants to offer her two or three years, then we just have to come up with that proposal.
Is there a reason to or to not, I mean, the two would be consistency, continuity. Recognition of someone's service, like, once we, the first couple of years, you don't know, but then you, if you're, you know, you're saying we. Think you're giving us a good service, et cetera, I think that's a good reason to offer more years, even if. And it gives you an ability to plan, like, if there's a, there'll be X percent increase per annum, whatever. At least you can calculate what it's gonna be.
Right.
You know.
So what she's offering right now is thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty a year, which is already approved by town meeting.
Right.
If we were to try to negotiate a second year, I would assume we would have to come up with a figure.
Yeah, you would.
So that's, I mean, I'm throwing it out to you all, that if.
I I think it's worth the conversation, two-year contract, what does it mean financially?
Well, so how about this, Melissa? When you talk to Sarah tomorrow, maybe introduce her, or say that the board would entertain making us a two-year contract and. Do we wanna have a figure, or do we want her to have a figure?
I I I think, I think she she should provide the figure.
What's the increase from last year?
They created a small two, two or three percent.
I mean, offer the same percentage increase over the following year would be my, I mean, it's a percentage, right, so it's a larger number. But.
And just so, for severability on this, we have. Uh, we may suspend or terminate the contract at our sole discretion with it, with sixty days of notice. We may also suspend or terminate the contract immediately. Without providing the consultant with written advance, oh, for just cause.
I was gonna say, that's gotta be for cost.
And without providing the consultant with written notice. Advance notice, and then the consultant may suspend or terminate the contract at its sole discretion by providing sixty days written advance notice. And in, and then just she'll be compensated for services rendered through the due suspension.
I mean, I I would be inclined to offer the same percentage increase in the second year that we had from last year and see what comes back.
Yeah, I I would ask, would would a, would a second year be?
Or just ask.
So do we want to, do we wanna do that? Uh, well. I'm good, I'm good, so we'll say, or Melissa will say, you know, we'll offer a second year.
What would you expect is an increase that year, yeah?
If you want to.
I would say, what would a second year hold?
Right.
Yeah, same with discount.
Okay, Melissa.
It's worth leaving it open.
I I leave it open, I mean, too, it might for her, you know, she doesn't have to go through this and, you know, it's there, you know. We do pay our bills.
So Melissa, can you was, uh, tell Sarah that the board is interested in doing a two-year contract. And ask her what her second year would be? Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, office space in town hall.
That wasn't me, totally me, I had nothing to do with that item. Yeah, it's you.
Well, Frank, uh.
Well, that, oh, yeah, well, okay.
Um, so, and it becomes Sophia's question of. Do, does the board want Sophia to have a separate office space? And if so, how would we make that happen logistically, that there's two, two parter?
So she seems to, from what she wrote to us and what I've heard from pocketing her directly. She's by no means saying that she needs or requires or is demanding an office. Also, I think, you know, HR being HR, the only reason for to have that is for what I'll call sensitive conversations. Which is part of HR, right, so partitioning office section of this room would not achieve that goal. Under any certain circumstances, because the whole point of sensitive conversations is that they cannot be open, you need walls.
Well, it would to this extent, which is that when I met with the HR director. For most conversations, sensitive and non-sensitive, we have met in here with the door closed. Which does provide some level of privacy. Like you said, I think a lot of business isn't sensitive or private.
Which I don't think requires it, I agree, except for office.
But of all positions, an HR director may be presented with uh sensitive and confidential information.
Right.
So it would make some sense to have a designated office space. Maybe the solution at this point in time is. Is because we don't have an open office space to kind of just. Make sure that, you know, she has a space when she needs to have a sensitive conversation that's private.
And I think that's what's been happening.
She actually sent them emails, everyone that if they needed to get, you know, wanted to meet with her, didn't feel comfortable here or wherever. She'll go other places, I know she's been to people's houses, I know she's been to the library, I know she's, so. She's making it work, she makes it work. And and I know she's actually expressed that. Uh, she's found it helpful being in this office because of the amount of people that come in, employees that come in to talk to me, she's actually. You know, created quite a relationship with, with them.
That's not a bad thing. Okay.
So I think any employees have become more comfortable with having HR here, you know, that they are a little.
Yeah, she's just here to fire us, exactly, exactly. Um, so, I I think we can put that one to rest unless it comes back.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, um, I will follow up with her just because she, well, she'd bring two examples for it, but.
Right.
And explain that. This will, well, yeah, just that. If she needs to have a private conversation, and she needs to have privacy, to either come into the big meeting room or elsewhere. Um, and let us know if she has any.
I I would say that we should say, you know, should it turn out that the situation changes and she feels, then she'd reach out to us again? Right.
Town administrator items.
Just like, thank you, Justin, for the one handbook today, I'm just reminding you both, I need two from you and one more from you, Justin, please.
So my, and my overarching thing, which I emailed, um, Melissa and Sophia about, was in the new, or the forged and committee handbook. And maybe Frank should really hold off on doing anything on that at the moment.
What was your?
There's a lot of open meeting law review, and because sometimes guidance on the open meeting law changes. And also because they're specifically have an open meeting law guide that they're given and have to acknowledge receipt of when they.
Maybe we'd have better to just remove it from there and specifically say, be sure to read that.
The specific guides, yeah, and point to it, because the open meeting law guide is also really good. I mean, if you come up, it's hard to think of questions that aren't answered in a twenty or thirty-page guide. There are, there have been actually, well, now that I think about it, we've had a lot of questions. But, but those are usually really high-level stuff that you're not coming across when you're in the. Parks Commission or the counts on agent, that's usually right.
Through it, you wouldn't really see, like, it'd have to be something you would go back to research specifically.
Well, I think the other thing we could do, Melissa, a few things, one is, okay, it already points to the open meeting law guide, just make sure, if you have open meeting law questions. Really go to open meeting law guide, then the other thing that's really helpful with the open meeting law is that email. Where you ask questions, they just get back to you. So let's say I posted something on Friday and I forgot, this was a holiday on Monday, but it's a holiday. It's a holiday that the town recognizes, not the state, you know, you come up with a question like that, and I still have my meeting, just email the state office.
Right.
And it's that easy.
Right.
So remind people that they can ask questions to that email, obviously to the town administrator as well. But that, you know, that email is really easy, some stuff the state has down, that's one thing. And then my other thought was, we do need to tell them about specifically for posting agendas and minutes in Monterey. How to specifically, you have to email that to these people or fill out this form. But that, I mean, so that should be in there, but not the like general open meeting law stuff, I don't think.
That's a, I, it's a good observation, and I didn't catch it, but you're right.
That's my only old.
The rest of it I thought was pretty solid, I mean, I I submitted a bunch of them as well. At, um, overall, I've not ever saw.
The community compact grant shared position.
So I talked to Sean, uh, he sees this as being an EMS-only, right, community. Um, with the goal of having the person be at least an EMT, um, because we believe a paramedics and required. Uh, higher affiliations and stuff, so to start off with just an EMT. Um, they would use the buggy that we have and they can respond with one person. He sees them being out of our station, but would also respond to calls and Otis. There needs to be more discussion about how we're playing with fire calls. He sees it being about um twenty-eight dollars an hour, which comes out to be fifty-eight thousand five hundred plus benefits. They would respond to daytime calls and that was mostly it. Because he said anything more is gonna require, you know, us having some meetings with Otis to really dive deep into this, but he just said to point out to you, everybody, that. In five years, he's gonna, the fire company is gonna be losing three people that are very consistent at responding to calls during the day. Because they're gonna age out and retiring or removing or or whatever, um, and he also said just to mention that. If, if they, if you don't support the the grant or the shared person applying for that, that he just wanted me to let you know that. Possibly coming up this year or within the the five years, he will be putting in for full-time staff, one to two in the next year. Possibly more in the coming years, he just, he also said that it's very difficult just to mention that finding an EMS firefighter. Firefighter qualified person is very difficult, and if we wanted to try to do that, so they could respond to both calls, we're probably looking at about a hundred thousand dollar salary.
So I'm just like, my only question, because like, I clearly support it conceptually. But we're currently sinking, how, what, what are we paying the insurance, fifty-six or something? Close to, close to this amount, to have twenty-four hour coverage. Now we'd be spending that same amount for only, and I'm gonna assume since it's one person, it's really only five day a week during the day coverage, right?
Yeah, he didn't, he wasn't clear on, it was gonna be Monday through Friday or days on the weekends being part of the.
Right, right, or I mean, five days, I just said five days, right, so that.
And I did mention that you guys had concerns about that for your bank for the ambulance, he did note that of late, they have been. Either not responding or late to respond, so he has concerns with.
Uh, and the concerns may be real, but, um, but if we were gonna try, like, we're either in or out. Either we get that coverage or we're paying for one person for only five, eight-hour shifts a week.
I mean, the good part of this is if we get the grant, you're not paying for it in the first year. I mean, the good part of this is if we get the grant, you're not paying for it in the first year.
Right, but.
And if we don't go for it, he's going to put in for it, so it's going to be all on Monterey. Whereas a shared one will be.
But I think that this is something he needs to put into his calculation, that absolutely true, would cover one year. But the bigger question is how, you have to have a plan for how it segues with the existing services, because this doesn't provide the same service. It provides local service, five shifts a week. But we're currently paying for a twenty-four-hour service and if the issue is that the twenty-four-hour service isn't covering us a large enough percentage of time, we still have to figure out a way, how do we segue with that? In a way that makes sense for the town, because either we should have a twenty-four-hour service or we're making a decision to stop having that.
If I understood incorrect, I think the point of this one would be also the, the time, I mean, what it took, thirteen, fifteen minutes for the call that we know witnessed over there, is that this person would be there within, you know, three or five minutes and could start CPR right away, you know, it could be a difference between life and death. Or they can start addressing a wound and that kind of stuff.
I, I get the emergency of the, or emergence of the response, particularly if it's just, you know, as close as the library, but you're still going to, you know, going out to Otis or wherever, still think, for me, that they issue, all that's true. But it's still five, eight-hour shifts versus twenty-four-seven and then somehow those, the question is equivalent to.
How do you work the logistics if you have someone here and you make a call? Does it go to Southern Berkshire Ambulance or does it go?
When you call, when you call nine-one-one, because I just did it recently.
We're there.
You get, put it into Berkshire dispatch. And then, because if you listen on the pager, I got a pager, it's usually, I mean, you, we were there when my phone went buzzing off. It's a couple of minutes by the time they process it, figure out who they're going to dispatch. But then usually for medical calls in Monterey, they're dispatching simultaneously Southern Berkshire Ambulance and Monterey Fire Department. Unless they know Southern Berkshire Ambulance is not available, so they'll dispatch simultaneously Otis, Danesfield, Marlborough. Usually Marlborough.
The other thing, you know, the bigger, you know, one of the bigger pictures, and I think Sean's right for raising, you know, he's got people retiring. But the other issue, you know, Brian was a full-time officer and we're, we really need to look at the safety in the ambulance response because it's going to be there, it's not going to go away. You know, but, you know, we, you know, we're at over five million issue, we could be adding incrementally, you know, five, ten percent, I, I don't know what the number, but trying to put a number around that, what, based on what Brian's asking for, and I know they're working on the details, what does Sean perceive, you know, see the whole picture. Because it's not one of those things that you're just going to walk out the door and get somebody.
And I really feel like there, there needs, it's, it's hard to do it, it's hard to come up with a plan of how you get from here to there. And it's very tempting to try to, to take like
You take.
piecemeal steps, but if the piecemeal steps can't transition you from where you are to where you need to be, it makes it really hard.
I think you have to take the best information you have at the time and that's what you're depending on Sean and Brian saying, what, what do you think, what do you want, what do you perceive? And you put a number to it. That, that information could change, but it gives you a starting block for how you're going to manage all your costs. It's better that we go into next year's budget with guys knowing that we got X, Y, and Z coming two or three years out. We may do things differently with capital, we may do things differently with financing. It doesn't mean that you don't change the plan, but it means that you lay it out saying, you know, he probably could reel off, you know, three people that can no longer be, do fire service because they're old like me. Okay, what's that going to cost us? What, this person was born then, this person's born in. You put the money in there, you can switch it around, but it allows you to look at it, if we have the picture before we go into next year's budget, we can say, okay, what are we going to do about it? How, what, what are our options and waiting till like two years from now, Sean walks in? I think it's good that he's saying, hey, you know, you guys got to think about this, because this is what I'm thinking about. I mean, we may disagree, I, I, I don't know, but try to get it out. You know, okay, this is two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, you know, we're adding this and this and this. You know, there, you know, it's a, it's, you take what you know and you try to put a number to it. But it's in your mind then, when you start doing next year's budget and the next year's budget. You know this, when you go to spend capital, you go, two years out, I got to have two full-time firemen, that's a hundred thousand dollars. Wherever, you got to make decisions like that.
If what Sean, I like, if Sean, if what he's thinking is, this would be a way without a significant cost burden to the town to test out whether this is a workable concept. And it's like, yeah, the person's going to know it's a one-year contract because it's just an experiment. I'm okay with that, but I think what, what gives me pause is I don't, to me, I, I feel like I have a responsibility to the people that become part of the, our employees in our town. And the idea that we would like, okay, well, we're getting money from the state and we'll just, it's just for a year, but we, we're going to help, but like, I don't want to say it's for more than that when it isn't. And I want a clear plan of how it will work with other situations. That's all. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
All sounds good to me.
So is that an okay to like, start writing it so that?
I, I think, yeah, I think you, to write it, you got to lay out the plan. So, I mean, I think we, you need to lay it so we can see it and we can talk about it, and then I think there's, the only concern I have with you, Susan, is that who's going to come to work and say, well, you only got a grant for a year?
Well, we, actually with the police grant that we had when we first got the person, officer was only for a year.
I've known people, I've people who worked, um, who's.
But those positions are in demand, I mean. Yeah. I, I, I think, I would start writing it and then I think we need to look at, you know, the other things Sean's saying and try to understand the cost and the out years. So we, you know, we have time to work on it. You know, it's a real problem, particularly if you have forced retirement, you know, it's like an airline pilot, you know, you're at an age in the back of the bus, buddy.
And I think writing it is a good opportunity to, you have that as a moment to really think about, what is the long-range plan? How will this work? How will we transition from this to, like, where, what's your idea of what we're transitioning to? And how do we get from there to there?
Okay, so, I just had a couple small updates about the regional school district planning board, but they were interesting. So one thing that keeps with what Southern Berkshire has, how Southern Berkshire is operated, but it's just worth keeping in the back of your mind, is that the new school committee of eight towns, the school committee members are elected by all eight towns, by the total of the votes. So Monterey has a say in the sense that one of the school committee members will be from Monterey, but is not elected just by Monterey voters.
Which is kind of weird.
But it's how it's been.
That's how we do it now.
It's how we do it now.
Right, yeah.
Where it's changing a little bit because it's going from
Five towns to eight.
Five towns to eight, including one of the eight that's decides of like four small towns. So, that is actually what I expected, but what I was more interested by was that, how we vote on debt?
Yeah.
Because it came up, right? They've said a couple times, well, you vote this year and if all the towns pass it, then you have an opportunity the following year to vote on the debt.
Vote down the debt and that would be able to do.
Except that it's an entirely different vote, because the debt vote is by default the total number of voters. So four towns could vote down the debt, five towns, six, seven towns could vote down the debt. And it still goes on the total number of voters, which Barrington has thirty-nine percent of all the voters.
Ironically, of course, it's Barrington, he turned down the budget.
Well, what's really interesting, the more I've thought about it, Monterey's portion of the new school is really pretty small, I mean, they're talking about payments estimated at fifty thousand years.
Forty-four to forty.
Forty-four thousand, so if the project doubles.
Yeah, Jake actually gave me a spreadsheet and we ran it at where if it doubled, you know, where if the interest, and he has a thing there. And the percentage the state gives you stays the same. So if it goes up fifty million, their percentage goes up.
Except there is a cap, but they're, obviously they're going to keep the lead project below the cap.
If you go through the amount of money they spend on their schools, it's just incredible. And they give you a breakdown of what it costs.
Well, I wouldn't be surprised if the, if the building costs a lot more than estimated and if the interest rate's higher, but Monterey's still responsible for such a small portion of it.
I know, well, they take that six million, who's consolidating it, and then applies to the towns.
Which were already only doing ten percent.
Yeah, I know, it's ten percent.
So what percentage of the whole bond is Monterey responsible for, it's less than one percent?
I have the number, he sent me the spreadsheet, I looked at it, and I tell you, he gives you so many worksheets.
It's too much.
It's almost too much and, you know, you'd be better off, I, I mean, it'd be nice to be in summer, I said, but I found a sheet that really does it and it's like, what, they said the interest on that Monday meeting was three and a quarter, he ran it at six and a half. And what did, I forget the number what it did.
You mean the, the interest rate?
The interest rate, uh. But he did say that he, the school would be, I want to say a hundred and ten thousand to a hundred and thirty-five thousand square feet, depending on what the final number was. And he had budgets of a school of about, the last one he did was seven hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. But then there's other schools, some of these other schools were a hundred and thirty-five million, they were above that number. I, I, I think, you know, the wild card is, you know, the whole inflation thing.
Well, no matter what it ends up being, with making Monterey pay such a small percentage of it, if their numbers are right about the vote tech choice in, a couple students choosing in for vote tech could completely eradicate.
The question is.
I want more information on those numbers.
Well, we can, Jake is very quick to respond to, because I had a whole chain going with him on the weekend. But, uh, the one chart you got to know is we're going away, the education's going to cost more. Because what he said was, unless Great Barrington just votes it totally down or something like that, but if they decide to build for the Great Barrington, they're going to make it smaller. And we won't have that debt, but then we'll be paying the student charge.
Assuming there's room for the students, which there may not be.
Well, I think that's more of a fear tactic thing. That's why, I'm not doing. They're probably like, if you look at it, the five, the school enrollment's going to be down, you know.
So there may be, yeah.
You know, so I, I, I didn't debate on that, but it's a lot of hard whatevs. But, uh, you know, I could find that spreadsheet on, you know, the, I was talking to them in finance, I have specific questions I asked them. I can send them to them, like, what is your cost per square foot? You know, I looked at the Massachusetts website, you know, they give you all the history of the schools that they built.
I'm, I, I wasn't so much interested in speaking to that as just realized that this vote in October, likely in October, is the last vote once Monterey agrees to be part of the school district agreement. It, nothing Monterey, the way Monterey votes never matters again. Because the, we're going to be elected by eight towns with Monterey being a small percentage of that. And even the debt, which they had said, if you change your mind in one year when you see the actual number, if the debt is high, towns can vote it down. They didn't say that that vote's different and that it's going to be a total combined
Right.
numbers of all the voters.
Ironically, I had the impression when we were talking to them that actually it was an either or, there were two options.
Yes.
But that the school board that we were appointing or electing or whatever gets to decide which way it goes and one's default and one they have to act to.
So the default one is the total number of all the voters? The way she explained it at the meeting was it, the default is the total number of all the voters, that, whether that's the debt on the school initially or debt that we take later on for capital improvements, any debt on the school agreement. But, the, a super majority of the school committee could change it so that the debt is town by town.
Right.
But then, we got other, well, I think this is related, right, in Lucy's email there on the second page, debt vote under section sixteen N.
Right.
Is by ballot at an election call in accordance with that section, so I think that's what, yeah, that's the default. And then if the school committee by vote of a super majority chooses to go under sixteen D.
Right.
The town may hold a town meeting for the purpose of disapproving the debt.
And any town could take it.
Yeah.
But it's not guaranteed that the super majority would exist.
Mickey, yeah?
That is just what God means, it will, it may change. But we don't know that, we've been voting in it now and if the debt is really something that we realize we just don't want to take on, we're going to be kicked out of that, we can't count on the fact that it's going to be not voted by voter and going to go to the super majority. We can't count on that today. So, we have to vote, this is our only vote. First vote we make.
Once you're in the school district, you're in the school district.
If you're in it, you're not, we're not going to get out.
But, but the other point that Lucy made, which makes a lot of sense, is Barrington and the, the three towns of Berkshire Hills are bearing so, so much more of the cost of the new school, that if the cost of the new school doubles, I mean, they're talking tens of millions, right, more responsible than in Monterey. So, for what it's worth, anyway, I just thought it was interesting.
Well, they, they need, they, they need a new high school.
They do?
I mean, and they keep voting it down because they've got the debt on the other two states. So they'd like to get somebody else in there and, and help things along.
Well, but Mickey.
But I know that they're counting the more, more of it.
Apparently, when they're voting on the debt and we're voting on the debt for the eight-town high school, they're going to be simultaneously voting on building a smaller three-town high school.
The dual plan.
And, it, I don't know what the numbers will turn out to be, because it's going to be a smaller school, but it's also going to be split between fewer players. But Southern Berkshire's only picking up such a small percentage of the debt anyway. I don't know if it's going to end up being cheaper for them or more expensive. And they may well just want the cheaper option at that point, so, who knows? Um, unless anyone has more comments on it, this, the school at the, at this point in time.
I do have a question, I, Kim mentioned that there's another meeting in Sheffield, um, coming up with the eight-town group, do you know when that is or is there a different?
So, there's a couple things, which is that they have their full board meeting, and I forget what date it is next week.
It's RSTPB?
It's on, yes.
Okay.
And that's where they're planning to do, to, to do the thing. Um, but then there's the meeting at the Mahawi.
Yeah, that.
Which you have to register for if you want to go, and that is um, October fourth. It's in my calendar at seven, which probably is at seven or seven-thirty, you have to register, but it's free. With optional donation.
And, and the Mahawi, like, what's the, who's sponsoring that one?
The Mahiwi or? Berkshire Eagle, I'd say.
At Berkshire and Eagles sponsoring it, but, uh, Jane called and wondered, she's going to speak in opposition or, you know, it was before that Lucy or Jake had taken this one due presentation. But she, she reached out and said, you know.
A different view.
A different view.
So, yeah, and I don't know if other slot boards are having Lucy and Jake to their individual meeting, I'm not familiar with that. But if you, it's always easy to find.
Yeah.
Because I think at this point, everyone's posting it on their website, for the most part. Maybe, maybe one, maybe one, Mount Washington is, you know? It's kind of possibly a room, but Mount Washington returned their harpa.
That's it.
Yeah.
They returned it?
Yeah.
We don't want just thinking money. I don't, I can't even.
Um, okay. So the town, the town report, I just wanted to take a first stab at it. It's a lot to try to cover what happens in a year, I didn't really know how to tackle it.
Two pages.
But, the, well, is there a word limit? Okay, there's no word limit, so, this is just a first stab, all I did was briefly explain the membership of the board. Okay, there's no word limit, so this is just a first stab. All I did was briefly explain the membership of the board. Then I went through the three-town meetings that we had during that time period. Then I went through some of the hiring of department heads. Um, I know there was other hiring. I wasn't gonna do all of the hiring that was done, just because in the interest of keeping.
Privacy?
Well, you know, maybe that's a, a separate issue. None of it's really private, we did it a lot in the, in the public, but I, I felt like, like it, I chose to mostly stick with department heads, just because that kept it like overarching. Um, and then briefly touched on ARPA, the Hume lawsuit, because I felt like those were two big things. And then I just mentioned briefly some of the ongoing things, but I throw it out there in case anyone has any fact checking, or also just things that you felt like were missed, or shouldn't be included, or should be referenced differently, but um, if you do, you don't have to make those things, you can always just bring them to a future meeting.
Exactly.
Um, under.
Where does this end up going in the annual report?
In the annual report. That's all. I mean, I think I could've just written it up myself, but I figured I would rather have more eyes on it.
Thanks.
Was, uh.
Thanks for doing it.
I got the years in for the, the police, which I wasn't certain on the exact years. Um, yeah. That's that. If you have, um, if you have comments on it, bring them to a future meeting.
Okay.
Um, then please do look over and see if you have things to add. Um, under unanticipated business, there's just one thing that I have to raise awareness about, which is just that one of the abutters next to the cell tower service road raised a concern.
The one here or the one here?
On Thirty-One Main Road.
Okay.
So the, the one, almost to the Van Gogh line.
Yep.
Uh, next to, well, rented by the news. Um, he raised concern that it hasn't been properly maintained.
The road or the tower?
The road.
Okay.
So you would ask why does the town, why should the town get involved? It's just a private company that owns the road. Well, there's a couple reasons potentially for the town to get involved. One is that under the, uh, conditions set forward by the ZBA back in twenty-eleven, um, when they approved the project, they mentioned things like the town having access up there, because if the town won't put things on the tower. Um, and so if the road's not maintained, the town can't drive vehicles up there, so that's a potential concern. And then also eventually if the drainage really, the drainage issues are so bad, the road, the water could run out onto the road. Onto the main road, which is very specifically stated in the ZBA conditions. So long story short, I don't think that there's a lot for the select board to act on, but I did take the concern of the abouter and raise it to the director of operations and the building commissioner, because the building commissioner enforces.
He's the only enforcement?
The only enforcement. So that's that. I don't think there's anything for the select board to do, but I figured that I should mention. That's ongoing.
Anything else?
Unanticipated?
No, I don't have anything.
Comments and questions from the public?
I'm pretty happy saying.
Um. Minutes, so just somehow also I put the wrong date in here. It wasn't eight-twenty-one, it was eight-twenty-eight, I'm pretty sure. I don't know why I had that wrong.
Wait, where are we? Eight, uh, in what?
But we're not doing those, sorry. Those are the minutes of the school meeting, eight-town school meeting.
Gotcha. Oh, yeah, do we have those?
What we're waiting for is, there were a couple subcommittees at the school board that met, and I emailed Lucy today. Because also, I think the RSD, well, someone should generate minutes, and then we can more or less use those minutes, maybe with some minor modifications as our own minutes.
Right. I mean, we each said one thing, right?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
I mean, I don't, bye, nineteen. Um, yeah, so we'll take those, and then, so tonight we just have the September eleventh. I need to run to the restroom.
By the way, the, um, I was looking through some STR stuff, Frank, and it looks like there's at least sixty-six. I don't know, I didn't collect that data myself, I got it from someone else who was collecting data. Um, sixty-six in Monterey, when that was done, which was like a year ago, so it may be different now, but it gives you a ballpark now.
Yeah.
Which is quite a few.
Yeah, cause I think what, there's nine hundred homes, so that's, you know, five percent.
And did you see that New York is like?
They slammed them.
Oh, my god.
Yeah, they slammed them.
I'm, and I'm surprised Boston, like, the housing crisis in Boston's unreal, and I'm waiting to see what Boston's gonna do.
It's unreal anymore.
Well, yeah. I mean, but the, and, and New York's not the only one, like, Japan slammed them too, a whole bunch of places have just like cracked down and said, nope, not anymore.
Now, now I'm wondering about the open meeting law. In the, in the guide. I think, like, executive session, we don't have to have how to call an executive session in there. I mean, other than the select board, and, I mean, most boards just don't have to, and if you do, just consult the guide.
I mean, it seems to me what it should basically say is tell people to consult the guide.
Well, yes, but I was, I'm having second thoughts, being that the two things that we could include, which are very short and simple, is what needs to be in an agenda.
Right.
Which the form kind of takes care of, because to fill out the form, you have to put certain things. And then what needs to be in minutes.
The ARPA is getting minutes, huh?
Yep.
Yeah, but.
Talk to the energy group, yeah, I've been to a few of their meetings.
But.
Especially if you tend to range a lot when you're like eleven members talking.
Maybe, maybe if anything, I'm just trying to think, I think the open meeting law guide has like a paragraph on each that's pretty concise. But the way we have it now, it says what needs to be in there, and then, well, these things would be recommended, but you don't need to have them. And it's a lot. Hey, sorry, I just saw, you know how it is, one for minutes, and you see a word in a minute?
Yeah.
Start to have an idea, this is just a.
Okay.
Were there any other changes or roll?
Um, yeah, so I had in six.
Yeah.
On the, uh, second to last line of the orange.
Yeah.
On giving the pigeon of the, it should be residence with a T S.
Yeah.
And he wants, not want, to be careful on spending comment, an STR bylaw should be one word. Um. Um, and then in.
Speaking of bylaws.
Yeah.
Um. As we, the bylaw, we're not doing the bylaws at the October meeting.
I think that's kind of what we.
So how do I call it here?
But, well, we're definitely not now.
Yeah.
But are we gonna, does, do you know if the, the bylaw review committee, if we're gonna be able to do them in a December?
I think it would be great, but I haven't had a sense, like, he was having a really hard time getting a date that he could get at all.
Yeah.
Why? You guys were meeting for ages and it wasn't a problem. Why is it suddenly a problem? I, I, I have no comment, I don't know why. Um, it's a good question. Uh, and while you were gone, we also noted that, I don't know if you caught this, did you, did you see anything about the STR regulation in New York City?
What's up?
They just basically banned them outright for like, there's almost no ability to have them help. And there's a huge, this is New York City.
What are they, like, city councils?
Uh.
Yeah, they have, they, they have a city council.
They have a city council, they also a mayor.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I don't know who came up with it, but basically it's a done deal, they did, it's, like, they just basically banned most of.
Well, it's kind of like subletting.
Well, it is kind of.
And subletting is always.
Except that ban.
It's not really, subletting's a longer term, like, subletting.
But it wasn't often, is subletting illegal? And it was not that.
You know, it's not done.
There's a lot more.
It depends, pardon, my daughter has a two-bedroom and she self-leases, and it's worked out great.
Is it legal?
It's legal.
Yeah.
It depends on the building.
Yeah.
And the building, it's worked out great, cause she's good, these like professors from Columbia that come to teach her in the summer, and they pay almost all the rent. You know, she's in Brooklyn.
It's, but she's living there and they're like renting a room?
Yeah, they, it's all through personal content.
Right, right.
Yeah.
But it also, I think usually when you're talking about subletting, you're not living there. You're renting out an apartment that you otherwise are renting, and there's all kinds, it's a weird how these situations, it's very different from here.
But.
So like, there's condos and there's co-ops, and each one has a different rules about what you can and can't do. And then there's like this whole other class that's rent-controlled, and that has all kinds of rules about like, we lived in a rent controlled, stabilized building.
Been in there for fifteen years.
Yeah, exactly. Um, so there's a lot of different situations, but basically it, there, it was really wrecking the rental market like it is in most cities. Um, so they're basically like, yep, nope, can't do it. For most situations, which is a big deal.
I wonder. Yeah, I wonder if they'll probably face a lawsuit or something.
Oh, I'm sure they will.
I think well, but I.
But they'll lose.
I think they'll lose. You know, it's true, you can make a lot of money, we know a couple, they have six condos in DC, and they doubled their income by making them Airbnb. You know.
It is lucrative.
You go to downtown or do concert for them, and they double them.
Because you can charge more per night than you could for, for a vacation than you can for a rental.
And then some of the cities endorse it because they tax it pretty heavily, you know, they got a lot of income.
Yeah, they do that right up until they realize there's no housing for the people anymore.
You know, you start taking that housing off the market.
It doesn't seem like a big deal till it's twenty percent of your housing.
Yeah.
Um, nine D.
Nine D.
Both of us tried to get at the same thing. So Frank noted an email receipt from Sophia, you removed N, and I added she, I think. So in, in which she responds, like, Frank wrote an email receipt from Sophia, which responds to his inquiries. In which she, she responds, like, we have to pick one of the three?
Or both.
Well, from Sophia, which she responds to doesn't work. In which she responds to does.
Yeah, so, oh, 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 I see one's delete, one's add.
Right, right. Um. But we could, we could get rid of mine and have which responds to, which also works. But you can't delete one, add at the other.
Okay, we'll just delete both, because it's easier to cross out.
That works. That works.
All right.
It's stupid and small, but it's still real.
Motion to approve the minutes of September eleven as amended.
Second.
Is there any discussion on that? Will vote? Yes.
Yes.
So that's a unanimous approval of minutes, let's get a little, uh, signature. Yeah, wait, Melissa, please.
Some, I don't see it.
Go ahead.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Will vote?
Yes.
Yes, unanimous meeting adjourned at eight oh five PM.
Hi, Laurie.
Good night.
Hi, Laurie, get some sleep.
I thought about it for next week.